Let me call this special call meeting order. The purpose is to have a discussion about the greenways and status of different things. Josh is going to lead us through some discussion here.
All right, so welcome. And I know this is something that we've talked about for many number of years. And you know, this is something that a lot of, a lot of work has been done behind the scenes that everybody, of course, isn't privy to a lot of the time. But what we wanted to do tonight was just take some time and kind of let you know where we, where we are with, with the, I guess, Riverwalk Greenway. So I'm just going to kind of roll into this PowerPoint, but I want to just say a couple of things as far as, you know, this is a federally funded project, so we've got to follow whatever those rules may be. So those rules for us, for this greenway, are the same rules that are used for transportation projects, interstates, things, things like that. So the rules are typically a little more stringent. You've got to go through some more red tape. And I think that is part of the reason that it's taken as long as it has to get to where we are. But let me just kind of just jump into this. That's of course Flat Creek Greenway. So I think we'll go through this pretty quickly. If you have questions, please stop me as we go through.
Josh, could I just, this kind of might be helpful for other members of the board, but especially for the public listening in. Just a, just a quick summary of, of where, you know, where we are to date on what we spent and that we, we have spent, we had funds set aside for engineering.
Correct.
To the tune of.
So I think the, the original, or the, the anticipated cost right now is around $6 million.
For the whole project?
For the whole project.
The engineering is up.
Engineering is a portion of that.
It's close to $800,000.
$800,000. And we had some funds set aside for the engineering. So what we did is some preliminary discussions and then we, we then hired the engineer, the same person who did the study and the plan for us, we hired the engineer to move forward with engineering.
Correct.
And the engineering was focused on the section between, behind the primary school over to going over and under number nine and connecting with what would be the greenway going from that point over to Veterans Park. So, so we've been working, that's really the focus here to fore. We had engineering funds. We're working on the engineering for that, that section of the greenway from behind the primary school over to, let's call it Black Mountain Avenue. And in the meantime, we had, we were, we had funds awarded through the transportation process. And the last piece of that is $1 million or approximately $1 million. For now, it's called, it would be called the Carlos showers leg. That's Black Mountain Avenue to Veterans Park to the, you know, to the, behind the Monterey College Fields. But those monies, that's the last piece, the piece funding, the Carlos showers greenway. That is the total of 6 million. And so, so as far as the funding, it's relatively, most of it's locked in. That last million is, is just about locked in. It's going to be on the current step, right?
That's correct.
And to be voted on soon, but it'll, it will be. And so the funding's in place, the funding is in place and the funding is also stalled because of the state DOT situation. And so that gets us to where really Josh needed to call this meeting to bring us up to date where we are on our, on the engineering portion that gets us that much closer to moving forward. Is that fair enough to say?
I don't know that I could have said it any better. Thank you for that. So, you know, when we originally did this, I guess back maybe in 14, when I was here as planning director, you know, the section we looked at was the section you mentioned first was primary school to Black Mountain Avenue. Then since that time, we've combined all that together to now be one project from primary school, Black Mountain, all the way to Anthony Oaks. So that, that's, that's the project now. But as, as, as the mayor was mentioning, we did have set money aside for that, for this project, and we also received money from Buncombe County for this project. So what I'm going to go through are really what we've been working on in depth has been engineering. And we have to be at a 60% level of engineering to submit to DOT to go to the next phase. All right?
Construction.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way, right-of-way.
So how this works, you do all the engineering, then you do right-of-way, then you do construction, and you have to do it in that order, otherwise they won't, they won't reimburse. So let me just jump right in. And that's another pretty picture of Lake Comahawk. So the challenge that we run into, and I've got some maps here I'll throw up in a second. So try to put this in simple terms. When, when we're doing these types of projects due to federal funds and some other issues, we have to obtain what we call a no-rise situation. So what a no-rise is, is when you are doing development in a floodplain or floodway, if you will, you have to present a scenario where there is not any rise in, in water. It can't be an inch, half an inch, it can't be anything, it has to be zero. So what we've run into in this project is we've got some bridge crossings. And specifically, the area that we're looking at is going to be behind the Swanano Valley Friends group back on, I guess it's on Swananoa there, where one bridge is going to be located. We've run into a situation where we've had trouble getting this no-rise scenario.
Do you know, everybody know where that is? If you go down, it's, it's Central Avenue, isn't it?
Is it Central or Center?
Center.
Center, Center Avenue.
Yep.
But do you know where the Friends of Korea building is there? That, that, the Friends house is adjacent to that property, but over near the creek.
So what happens is if your project does end up resulting in a no-rise, then you've got to look at, you know, who's going to be liable for, for worsening this flood if, if we in fact do have a flood, which I think are obviously inevitable, regardless of how small the increase is, like I mentioned, it can't even be a quarter inch, it's got to be zero. So like I said, the challenging portion is the alignment from 70 to the railroad. Now we, I think our original, our original alignment and design was, is going to be going underneath the culvert on Highway 70 using an existing culvert there, putting in a couple of relief pipes, if I'm not mistaken, for flood, for flooding. And then going under the railroad with a tunnel. And then of course going under N.C. 90, using an existing culvert with some relief pipes. Michael Baker, who's the engineer of record for the project, they have done about 16 scenarios on trying to get a no-rise situation back here behind the Friends group on this section of Swananoa. And we, they have been unable to get the no-rise situation. So I'm not going to read through all this, but these are just the scenarios that they went through to try to get water to stay net zero and not have any rise at all. This isn't going to mean much to you. So here is the bridge that is, that we're talking about. If you'll notice at the bottom there, that is the building, the Friends group, and then you've got to cross the Swananoa there with this, with this bridge. And I think in 16 scenarios they've looked at, they have not been able to get anything that will produce a no-rise situation. So what that means for us is we, the properties that are showing the rise, I think there's three properties back there that are going to be impacted by the bridge location. We will have to purchase those properties in order to make, make this happen because we've got to be able to do mitigation in this area, and that is the option you have to go through when you're using federal money. Now, the other option I think that is on the table is the potential for looking at another route for this section. And another option I think is something that we don't know about yet, that we're continuing to explore in this area. Looks like four properties.
It's the same owner.
Same owner. So the properties in yellow are the ones that are experiencing the rise in floodwater with this, with this bridge construction.
When you say, when you say experiencing it, you're saying if you, if you had a rise, you had any rise, that it potentially impacts that area?
That's correct.
So you've got to buy it if you're going to go through there.
That's correct. So if you look to the north of this, of the yellow properties, of course, that's the storage buildings kind of over to the northeast, of course, is whatever rents Billy Wells property there. And then you've got, so all these, these four properties are, market value, we don't know yet, tax value about a million dollars, they'll live to me about.
And all the, but all the same owner?
No.
Oh, not the same owner?
No.
So the option, the option one, the purchase property's option, the pros of this are going to be our alignment stays exactly as it is today. We go through, put the bridges in, nothing changes. Cons, now I think something that we've got to look at is whether these property owners are willing to, are willing to sell because we have to go through the process of offering them market value, and that's, that's just something we have to do under the Uniform Act, is offer them market value for those properties. They can always take less, but we have to offer that, whatever that may be. Already mentioned the tax, the tax value of those properties. We think it's probably going to be higher than market value. I think that's just, that's just something that you run into. Now the question comes in about additional funding to buy these properties through the same process that we've gotten our funding from for the whole project, which is surface transportation money, which is federal money. That's going to open in 2022, and Jessica and I are still going back and forth with DOT to see if purchasing these properties with that funding is an option. We know that funding is not going to be available for another eight years or so, even as we go through that process. So you're looking at an extended time if we're able to use that funding. And of course, the funding is not going to be guaranteed. All that stuff has to be scored through the NPO to see how it scores, how it ranks. Not to confuse you too much with this map, but the green line is our preferred, or it's our current alignment of this project. Now the purple or pink lines are just things that we have looked at as options, potential options if there are no other options and we aren't willing to purchase the property So this alternative, I think is going to put us, and I don't want to get down into the weeds too much, what we, what I, the goal tonight was just to give you kind of an update where we were. Don't expect you to make a decision at all, just want you to be thinking about this as we move forward. And as the mayor mentioned, at this point, we're kind of frozen with our funding with DOT of moving any farther past engineering right now. So this alternative would put us on, essentially on road, and that could look a number of different ways. There could be multi-use paths, there could be sidewalks, there could be sharrows. We don't know exactly what that looks like right now, but this is something that is a possibility. It will get people from point A to point B, which is, I think, the ultimate goal is to get people to where we want to be, to where they want to be safely.
So we're, we're, just not to get, not to get into much detail, but is that, is that, are you leaving from that upper end? Is that Oley's there? Is that where that is?
That is, right in the front, where you can't, right above there, where you can't see where that purple or pink line begins is the school right across right there.
DOT was supportive of using that existing high-visibility crosswalk and coming down that way.
At the school. So, oh, oh, so you would be behind the primary school, and how are you going to get there?
So behind the primary school to get there, we have that existing crosswalk there now on 70 that comes in right there at the school.
And sidewalk.
What that, what would need to happen is, of course, that's going to be, need to be outfitted and made a little more safe, a little, a little safer for folks, kind of like with the push-button, rapid response, flashing beacons that we're looking at for, for State Street down where Terry is. So the question comes in is if, you know, if we end up going, if the board ends up making a decision where we don't think it's in our best interest to purchase that property, the question comes in, is there a need to go under 70 at all at that point? So the pros and cons of, of this alternative would be, pros of course, we can still make safe connections, as I mentioned. You're going to reduce those structures that are needed, so you would reduce the need for going underneath 70. You would reduce the need for going underneath the railroad, which are obviously pretty substantial costs.
And two bridges. I mean, we crossed the river twice.
And of course the bridges. Of course, and these are, you know, kind of the numbers for the underpass, and this is just construction cost, isn't it?
That's correct.
So $350,000 for the underpass for Highway 70. Bridges look like they're close to the same amount, 160,000, 188,000. The tunnel for the railroad is 460,000. And then you've got an agreement with Norfolk Southern, which is a quarter of a million dollars. And I think the important thing that I don't know that we've really spent a lot of time on, and I don't know that we can even answer that or even explain it too well, unfortunately, but when we do, if we end up going underneath Norfolk Southern, it would be similar to what we have now with them down in Sutton, where we pay a certain amount for those parking spaces, like a lease, is that what it would be called with Norfolk Southern? Because we give them X amount of dollars a year to have those parking spaces because it's in their right-of-way. So, you know, they have, they're, they're kind of holding the cards on that, you know, whatever they're going to charge us for, I guess it's called a lease, right?
I think so, yeah.
It's a lease to go underneath the railroad, and that's something that we would just have to pay, you know, whatever, whatever those terms are, and I think that's something they're going to set.
Southern Railway's right-of-way is unlike the right-of-way of the most other entities or people that you have. They exercise a more exclusive right over their right-of-way than we do. In our town right-of-way, they may be 60 feet wide, but if we only need 30 feet of it for road, and the neighbor wants to know where to park his car there, we can't, don't see anything about it because it's not obstructing the flow of traffic in the roadway. Norfolk Southern treats every inch of their excessive land right-of-way as being absolutely theirs.
And then of course we'll have savings, you know, if this was something that we, we, we moved towards, there's going to be savings in utility relocations. And then of course, I think one of the, one of the major cons is it's not on the river like I think everybody, everybody would desire it to be.
Certainly one of the other pros, you're getting it done.
True. That's true.
Within a reasonable timeframe.
And I mentioned some of these a few minutes ago about alternatives, you know, whether there'd be a neighborhood greenway, and you know, DOT's got specs and standards on these types of things, sidewalks, whether we use sharrows as opposed to a 10-foot multi, multi-use path. And as we move, you know, as we move forward, however we go, you know, the, the western end of this project down towards, in the Oaks, and a lot of that's going to be using existing ri, existing road, Terry Estates is going to be used. I think that's something that we, that we selected, I guess, a number of months ago for that. And I'll remind you, that was because going the original design route back hugging the Swananoa, we did not have willing property on freestones.
That's correct.
So in our discussions, or I'll say Jessica's discussions with Marta and Tristan, we think that the NPO is going to be supportive of a, of a neighborhood greenway. We don't see them looking at this as a, as a bad thing at all, being an eight-foot, eight-foot paved path and a share-o combination. Of course, it'd be in low-speed, low-volume areas.
What's a share-o?
Share-o is, is simply a paint on a road. It's usually, you've seen them before, you just don't know what they are, but they're usually a bicycle with a couple of arrows.
There's that picture we just had up before.
I'll show you.
It's not a bike lane, but it's a shared the road.
They haven't been asked of.
Shared road.
We don't have any here right now, but this is something I know that we, that was talked about and, and essentially proposed in our bicycle lane idea a few years ago. And then Jessica mentioned, we've talked to NCDOT, they are, are supportive of us, of us using the existing crosswalk on 70, and I think, you know, doing some outfits to that and make it safer versus using a box culvert as the underpass. Okay. Before I get into that, do y'all have any questions for me? This is a quick, quick and dirty version. I think I just wanted to give you an update, kind of tell you where we are. We are, we do have some hurdles, and I think it's something that we'll need to continue to talk about in the future of how we want to deal with, with that scenario behind the Swanano Valley Friends.
Well, I think, I mean, just suffice it to say that, that some, you know, we'll just have to come back to the board at some point in time and make a decision about option one and two. And that's all we're trying to do tonight is to give the public a heads up and, and, but it'll, it'll have to come, it's just going to have to come back to, we'll have to make a decision about it.
Yeah.
And that, that's just, just evident, isn't it?
That's it, that is it. And I'm happy to answer the questions if you have questions specifically on this.
So if we've looked at buying that property, we could pay for that, we would have to apply for that money?
Yes, and we're still, we're working on getting those answers of whether or not that is something that they would be, that would be, that would be an eligible expense. I think some of the, some of the things they're going to look at is, is this the only option you have to connect?
Right.
If it's not, then that may be something they're not willing to spend a million dollars on.
And then we have to just hope that the funds are available in the '27, '28, because you said it's taking, it would take that long to.
That's correct.
For it to move through the pipeline. We've got money that, we've got money available that's moved through the pipeline that we're ready for, that they're not ready for.
Well, even the money, we're, right. Even the money that we were allocated this year is, it's not, it doesn't become available immediately, you know? It's still a couple of years out. I think that, I want to reiterate that this no-rise situation is, it's, DOT hydro has basically said they do not see this being able to be achieved. Even, I think my favorite scenario they ran, or that really got my attention, was an 84-inch culvert under the railroad, dropped it a tenth of an inch.
Right.
It was pretty phenomenal. And that, yeah, DOT would, I spoke to McCray Coats this afternoon and still trying to get a clear answer, and he's saying, well, we don't, there's, it doesn't seem to be a hard and fast guidance on if it's allowable to spend the money. There seems to be some, well, if the property owners are interested and the community supports it, but if you have another route, we don't like to get into taking private property. And so he's trying to find something, I told him I'd prefer something in writing, so he's working on that.
Right.
But it's complicated.
But we don't have, that's not a decision we're making tonight. It's just, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, that's not an easy solution actually to get the money because you're pushing it so far out.
And you would still be in right-of-way at that point. You would not be, we would be, we basically would complete PE and be done for six years or eight years, and then go to right-of-way and utility relocation, and then construction. It would really, it would hold things back.
Yeah.
And I'll say, you know, you may be asking yourself in your head, why, why are we getting this information now and not two or three years ago? Well, the unfortunate part about this type of funding is, you know, this is what happens with highways. You go through the process, you do the engineering, and you, a lot of times you don't find out what the issue is until you get to it. And, and I think, you know, that hap, that is not uncommon for that to happen, so.
Well, it's exactly what happened, it's exactly what happened with the exchange in Blue Ridge Road. I mean, it's been talked about forever, and then the funding was there. When they started the engineering, that's when they, that's when they know what it has to look like.
Yep.
Because then they didn't know that until they decided they couldn't be here and it couldn't be there. And so the, you know, the, the, the design of it had to have a, you know, a certain, had to be in a certain place because they, they couldn't make it on the other places, you know? And I think that, my brief discussions with all the engineers on that, that's kind of how, that's kind of how they all work. They don't, they just don't know exactly what it's going to look like until they get that far along.
That's it. That's right.
So where does this, so that's fine. So on this section, this is just a decision that has, is going to have to come back to the board about what we're going to do with that leg of the greenway. But then, but then what can we do, and I mean, what, and, and what is your recommendation, Josh, as to how we move forward now on things we can do?
So, and I've talked to Jessica something about this. I think that, and I don't know that this would be something challenging or hard to do, but now that this is, this is one project, I think we're, our hands may be a little bit tied. Now, I think there is, I hope I'm not speaking something that's not true, but I think there are opportunities for us to potentially separate these projects, maybe. If we do that, then I think we can do a section.
Do the leg.
Now what that's going to mean is, it's going to mean more, more legwork. It's going to be more work for us because essentially we're going to have two projects, two reporting, you know? You've got to double everything, if that makes sense.
I see.
Because instead of having one project for the whole greenway, now you've got two sections that are going through this funding.
I see, I see, I see.
You have two audit processes. This project was at one point two. Actually, it was one and we extended it. At the time, I thought we were getting one, but it was actually just segment A and B. And we worked with the NPO and talking to, with Raleigh DOT, wanted it to be one because it was, it was easier to manage, and we would submit the whole project as one thing.
That makes sense. So where this is going is that we have, if we're on hold with this leg, until, of course, the board's going to have to make a decision. I had to ask Josh, well, why can't we focus then on the showers leg of the greenway and go from Black Mountain Avenue over to Veterans Park? You know, the engineering's pretty simple, or Josh thinks it is, would be. But that's the problem with that. It's one project and it would be, you know, we're not going to be able to do that unless we, do that unless we broke it out. And then if we break it out, then it does become a little more complex as far as managing it. So I guess what that says is it just really highlights the fact that board's going to need to make a decision. This, this decision, it needs to be made in a reasonable period of time here so we can keep moving.
In the next few months, yes.
Well, I would say as soon as the board's ready to make it.
Well, and we are still frozen, and that's, you know, not the technical term, but we cannot, DOT cannot make these drawdowns basically from federal allocations, and they're starting to be able to mobilize, and this is a complicated equation on, based on, you know, their, their cash flow situation. I've been working with DOT and letting them know that we are very close to 60%. This is our hangup. And I've told them that, you know, in three to six months, they, they asked me, if in three to six months, we would be ready to go to right-of-way or some, and I said yes, because our goal was to have 60% this summer, but this no-rise prohibited us from doing that. So now it's, you know, we are hoping by end of the year. Now, when we go to that 60% submittal, it will go into the portal with DOT, and it goes through an audit process and gets comments back, and we will wait however long that is. Sometimes that's three weeks, sometimes it's six months. You don't necessarily know. And at that point, then we will get approved to go to right-of-way and, and utility relocation.
So, so if we, if it's one project, so if we have the engineer go over and do engineering work from, go ahead and do the engineering work.
It's done.
It's done, I think.
That's what I'm kind of saying.
Yeah, this is, this is our hangup right now.
All the engineer, I thought we only had, I thought we had 60, 59% of it done.
Well, that's true, but what you have to submit, listen, don't think about the 60% as the project as a whole, just 60% in general. It's not broken up by segments. It's a 60% level of engineering documentation to submit.
Right.
It's not.
It's not linear.
It's not linear, yes. So it's not, it's not, the first segment is 100%, we're waiting on the next segment to be 50%.
So the engineering's done on the showers portion of the greenway.
Everything except this section.
Except this, okay. So that's good. So, so that being the case, and we have one project, and we are stuck here. I'm a little confused with this. If we've got all the engineering done, why are we like stymied at, at 59% and we're not at 60?
Because we have the no-rise.
Because we can't get a no-rise. You have to have a no-rise on the entire project.
Oh, the, the no-rise just applies to the whole shooting. You've got a no-rise and the whole thing's on hold.
That's right.
Okay.
And I don't want to be, I don't want to oversimplify, you know, being, engineering being complete because this is such a, such a complex project, the infrastructure. But, you know, we're ready for that review, and basically we know where everything is and how it's going to go, and that allows DOT to say, okay, now go, go get the ground to put it on.
Yep.
So because we have the no-rise situation, we can't move unless we broke the projects out. We can't do anything unless we, till we, till we make this decision.
They get a couple of options.
And if we stuck with option one, we can't do anything until we have, buy the property to what it amounts to.
And we are still kind of waiting, and in any scenario, we're just going to stay in the, we cannot move to right-of-way for at least three to six months because of DOT's funding situation. So we have a little bit of buffer built into this process due to their holding us.
Right.
We were, we were one of the many, you know, frozen projects across the state.
Right. Well, I, I'm, I'm good on, I think, I think we all understand that, but the thing is, we want to get to the point where we're waiting on DOT to send us money.
Yep.
That's what we want.
Yes.
That's our objective. So we, we get that the DOT's had their issues, but we can't, we can't do, I mean, we So we, we get that the DOT's had their issues, but we can't, we can't do, we, we could break the projects out, that doesn't seem to be practical, right? That wouldn't seem to be.
I think we could do it. I think what that looks like, I'm not sure, but unpractical is, is maybe a good word for that.
It would seem to be, that might not be the first option because it just complicates things.
And by the time it goes through the process, we would probably be on the other side because it has to, they have to amend the states. So by the time you did that, we may be on the other side of figuring out this alignment question.
So that, so breaking the projects, making it two projects at this point wouldn't seem to be.
The best option.
The best option. And, and we cannot do anything, we can't do the showers portion. It's one, we have to resolve this no rise issue. And so it just seems that the closest, I mean, the best thing to do is to circle back around and this just needs to come before the board to make a decision on it.
Yes.
And, and with.
And at that point, we are deciding between option one, do we try to figure out if we can buy the land? Option two, do we find an alternate path?
That's correct.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's correct.
So, and then once we make that decision, let's say you made the, we, we kind of, I mean, at least my, my understanding, if it's correct, if the board chose option one, then you got to figure out how to buy the property.
Mm-hmm.
Buy the property and then do whatever you need to do and move forward.
Right.
So that could take some time and, and of course, additional money. If you chose option two, then you could probably move forward a little quicker just because.
I think it would be much quicker.
Much quicker.
Just because you don't, number one, you don't have to figure out how to buy a million dollars, maybe more, piece of, likely more, pieces of property.
Because that's just the tax value.
That's just tax value.
Yeah.
And, and, but that, but once we did that, then we could start work on the showers part. Either way, if we, we resolve the rise issue.
You could start either way.
Either options, you have to buy the property before you'd solve the rise issue, but once you resolve it, then you could move forward on the, then you could move forward wherever on the whole proj, anywhere in the project.
Once you, yeah, once the engineer, you got the engineer done, then right of way and then construction.
But once you hit the 60%, which we can't hit because of the, because of the rise issue, I think that 60% discussion is weird.
It is.
Because we've done the engineering, I think it's better termed.
It's for the whole project.
If you, if you do the, but we've done, you, you've already just said we've done the engineering for the whole project.
Right.
So to tell the public that we haven't hit 60% is, maybe there's some technical reason that's right, but it doesn't make any sense. What's holding us up is the rise.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's just what it is.
That's right.
So once that is resolved, you know, you can then, when it's resolved and everything else is in place, I mean, you got some right of way, what, right, no, right of way is not even issued. You can proceed with right of way, whatever is needed.
Yep.
We don't even need any, do we even need that much on the showers portion of the greenway?
I mean, maybe some, but it's, I mean, I don't think it's going to be, it shouldn't be a big, big deal.
My point in that is that's the, that piece is, would presumably be, if we chose option two, it might not be that much, that much easier because option two would seem to be a little easier. But you got a connection. If you, once we do the showers part from Black Mountain Avenue, you, you're connecting over to Blue Ridge Road basically.
I think.
And that gets you to downtown and that's, that's worth prioritizing if we make that happen.
If the board decides to not buy the property and choose an alternate route, I mean, I think you're saving, I mean, you're saving all the, the time for the construction of the tunnels and.
Do we know that if, if the board chose option two, can we use these funds or do we have to, is that self-funded?
It depends on what typology is chosen for the neighborhood. So say we presented this to the community and, and we presented charros in an eight-foot path, that could be funded as a neighborhood greenway. If the neighborhood felt that an eight-foot path was, I mean, we do, I mean, we probably have enough right of way for it. I think it'd probably work, but if we found a constraint, we could, and we only wanted to do sidewalks and charros, then the town would fund that. So if we can come up with a typology through the neighborhood that is supported by DOT's standards for this funding, then we can use it. But if it is not, then we could not use the money.
Well, I don't see how you can bring it to the board intelligently for a decision until you at least work through some of these decisions in a preliminary fashion.
Yep, we've got to get, we've got to get that decision as far as what the typology looks like.
Yeah.
And if DOT is willing to accept that.
Right.
Otherwise, you're, you're funding it, but I think on the back end of that, you're not, you know, I think one of the positives of that is you're, you're funding sidewalk, but then again, you're not having to put that match in there for those other issues.
Yeah.
The other, the tunnels and things of that nature.
Well, I would think another discussion is, needs to be had pretty soon. We could do the next one at the board meeting and just kind of update. But I would think that, that for the board to make a decision, they need that.
Absolutely.
That some level of, of clarity on what option two looks like and all that kind of thing.
Absolutely. I agree.
So I don't, I don't know what else, where else we would go with that this evening besides that.
No, I think, I think we've got what we need.
Yep.
All right. So the last thing, and I think this, this should be relatively quick, I know a mission is at the la, at the, the last, at the last meeting, at the end of the last meeting, is the, the connection that goes under Interstate 40 with the trail that connects Veterans Park to the Community Garden and the disc golf area over there. We, we need to go through a process with DOT to get a, a MOU in place. That easement is a legitimate easement, it is fine. However, I don't know that we ever got permission from DOT to do what we did, so we need to go through that formalized process with DOT. It's a memorandum of understanding. What that means is we are going to need to make this more ADA compliant under there. We're going to have to take out that railing, take out some of that dirt and it's eventually repaved that so it's ADA accessible. We are still working with DOT on that MOU to see what that looks like. In the meantime, I think we'll have the ability to save quite a bit of money doing a lot of this work ourselves with our own crew. And I know we've already talked, talked to Jamie about this, of taking this, this, the material out at least hopefully in the, in the relatively near future and then just putting a base down until we can get pavement down next spring when asphalt.[1689.91]